I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's 5:30 on August 10th for our regular board meeting. Can you please do a roll call, Kelly?
Trustee Bazinski.
Here.
Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Bethan.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Mahalik.
I don't think he's on yet.
I believe he's muted.
Keep going, you can go back.
Okay. Trustee Morales.
Here.
Trustee Stamborsky.
Here.
And Trustee Broderick.
Present. Thank you. Well, I'd like to welcome everyone to our new school year. It's the beginning of a great year. We have a new president. We'd like to welcome him, too. Oh, you know, it's your first meeting. So we're welcoming Dr. Namua to our first meeting to be in charge. We're liking that. And welcome everybody here. And I think now we'll stand for a pledge of allegiance. And being that Dr. Namua is our first time here, you are in honor of starting, not in Hawaiian, but in English, the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Kelly, do we have any public comments?
Madam Chair, Vice Chairman, Chairwoman, we have no public comments.
Thank you. Okay, modal standards. We had a retreat back in July, and we, as the board, are starting out fresh new. Anytime you have a new member or a new president, we start as a new board. And we're going to reinforce our models of what we are all about. Each of us will be reading some of them so that everybody understands what we are going to be following, because we get a great retreat, and it works well to be a team together under our models. Alicia, would you start with the first three?
Yes. So the first one derives, the board derives its authority from the community, and that it must always act as an advocate on behalf of the entire community. Number two, the board clearly defines and articulates its role. Number three, the board is responsible for creating and maintaining a spirit of true cooperation and a mutually supportive relationship with its CEO, the cabinet members, by trusting in the leadership's ability and encouraging administration to share their successes, challenges, and major concerns regularly.
Thank you. Jim?
The board strives to differentiate between external and internal processes and the exercise of the authority, engages in regular and ongoing process of in-service training and continuous improvement, including building relationships with each other, board retreats, board dinners, et cetera, as well as attending other college functions on and off campus. Number six, expects its members come to each meeting prepared and ready to debate issues fully and openly.
Nancy?
Number seven, expects its members will both their conscious and supportive decisions or policy. Number eight, must exemplify ethical behavior and conduct that is above reproach as individuals and as a collective. And number nine, remains always accountable to the community.
Dash?
Number 10, honestly debates the issues affecting its community and speaks with one voice as a decision or policy is made. 11, puts the interest of the interests of the college before all others. And 12, promotes the mission and supports the strategic vision of the college within legal limits and refrains from sharing confidential college business.
Exercises diligence, competence, and objectivity in executing the position to which trustees were elected, devotes full attention to presentations shared with the board and to one's duties as a trustee, setting aside competing personal or professional interests, and promoting student learning and student success. Number 15, supports a positive working relationship with other trustees and the president on and off campus. Trustees must address concerns with other trustees equitably and respectfully, and understand the difference between policy development and administrative operational decisions.
16, directs employee complaints and/or requests directly to the president and community complaint and/or request to the president and the chair of the board. 17, refrains from using the position as a trustee to influence students and/or community members to negate any perceptions of conflicts of interest. This for sharing with the whole community so you understand what our positions as trustees are, and what our model of standards must be, and what we must uphold. And with that, thank you all for reading that, and thank you all for listening to our models. Next, I need a motion to go into closed session to be held in regards to items 2C-11 and 2C-1. I need a motion to go in to close session.
Make a motion.
Second.
I need a vote. Roll call.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Mahalik?
He can't get on. We have to do something when we go into executive session. Just.
Okay. And Trustee Broderick.
Aye. With that, we are going to stay in this room so that we can have the executive session. And being that said, I hate to say this, but thank you for coming in for the couple of minutes until we come back, but we need you to depart from the room for a couple of minutes. Thank you. We are back in regular session, public session. Do we have any business reports? I think we have the ERP update.
You. Vice Chair Broderick, trustees of the board, members of the JJC community, I'm actually going to hand it over to Dr. Farmer to introduce this one.
So once again, good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing Jerome Godlock, who is our Workday Program Coordinator. He continues to do just amazing work in leading this project, institutional project for the college. And he's here today to provide kind of a high-level overview for the board, some of our successes, and also some challenges that we are faced with right now in terms of the project. Jerome, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. I do not see the presentation, so I'll pull up the presentation on my end.
Can you see the presentation? There it is.
There it is.
Okay, I will share from my end, and we'll move from there. Thank you for that introduction, Dr. Farmer. Today, wanted, again, my name is Jerome Godlock. I'm the program manager for the ERP implementation. What we'll do today is take you through an update of the project and kind of where we've been and kind of where we're going. From a project update, again, to remind everyone, the board approved our software implementation partner and our software back in October of 2019. Since then, we've actually had some really great accomplishments with implementing our HR, finance, payroll, procurement, and benefits systems for JJC. Also, our student recruiting and admissions went live last year in October of 2021. After the recruiting and admissions, we then launched the most, probably the biggest and most important phase of the project, which is student Phase 2. We've had over 80 employees at JJC actively engaged in its student Phase 2. We've trained a lot of our employees. We've actually gone through what we call the setups configurations, our security business processes, as we're now moving into probably the most important phase of the project. When I last met with the board back in April, a lot has occurred. We have, as I mentioned earlier, the setup and configurations and our business processes have been configured. We completed our data conversion. I'll show you in a future slide, a lot of the data and some of the key elements and the amount of data that we've actually converted from your legacy system into Workday, and that will be used for our upcoming testing. We've completed an identification of over 300 reports that both will meet the needs of JJC operations and institutional reporting. And last month, we selected the software vendor for our cashiering and student payments, known as NailNet, and the board approved that. So at this point, we've got everything ready in the system, and we are getting ready for the next phase. What I wanted to show you here, and I'm not going to go through all of this, but it's some key conversion metrics, and basically what this is showing is the number of data elements that we're pulling across from your legacy system into Workday. And this is just a sample of some of that data. As you can see, we have over 53,000 students, and again, this is going back a couple of several years of data that we're pulling into the system in preparation for testing that starts this month. So August through December, we'll be testing, testing, and there will be more testing. We'll have additional conversions that we'll be going through with our system. Those 300 reports that we have identified, we will start building those reports and working on integrations with our system and key third-party systems for financial aid, testing vendors, payment vendors, et cetera. And we'll start planning our, what we call our cut-over activities as we start looking at moving forward with moving the system into production next year. And that will take place between January, starting January of next year, and final, we'll be finished with the project in the fall of 2023. The other activities we'll be doing is initiating our change management, training, and Workday adoption activities. And this is essentially making sure our students, faculty, and staff will be prepared for Workday when we go live with the system. We'll also be having what we call customer confirmation sessions, where our staff, those 80 people that have been involved with the project, will be working with other team members in their departments, and we'll be giving people kind of a showcase of how Workday will be working in the future. And then finally, we'll culminate all of that testing with what we call a mock semester testing. And this is where we will be bringing in students and some faculty to assist us with the final testing of the system and going through from the application process all the way through graduation in kind of a mock semester testing that we will be doing later this year. With any project of this size, it's very hard to get through without having challenges. One of the key challenges that we have run into is with our financial aid. Workday functionality, what we're finding, is not meeting all the needs of JJC. So with that, we have been working closely with Workday, as we've been working with what we call our delivery assurance manager, the product development team at Workday that actually develops code for the Workday system, as well as the Workday Student Delivery Services. We've had, leadership has had meetings with Workday as we've been trying to explain to them some of the requirements that we have, and we've received some really good, with part of those meetings, we've been receiving really good meetings that Workday is listening to us and taking those into consideration. At the same time, in parallel, we're not just waiting on Workday, we're working internally and with our AVAP partner to come up with alternative solutions to resolve those challenges. And so we put those in place, and we're working on communications, training, as well as part of our testing, to make sure that those alternative solutions work well for JJC and allow our students to continue matriculating and taking courses and moving forward within JJC without any hesitation or hindrance from a software perspective. With our placement area, we've also run into some challenges there because of legislative requirements, as well as just multiple layers of placement that we have regarding if a student is coming in based on test scores and layering all those in to replacement purposes, we've run into some issues with the number of levels of placement that we have. So we've been working with AVAP to come up with solutions to those and try to resolve those, and again, creating testing scenarios so that we can make sure that all placement eligibility rules are automated in Workday, and that our students are able to register for those courses that they are eligible for based upon their test scores. And then finally, another big one is our resources. We continue to see, you know, and have turnover within JJC. Our student financials area, student records and advising are three areas in particular. We have been actively recruiting positions and also working with internal staff to provide backfill and backup in those key areas so that we continue moving the project forward at the same time that we're trying to post and recruit in those positions in which we have vacancies. And then finally, when we look at other projects that are going on, in the HR area, we're implementing additional modules of Workday. The performance and talent project will actually help as relates to replace the current performance planning software that JJC is using. And the learning software that we'll be rolling out with Workday will help provide employees with a central location for all of their training needs, track external learning, as well as track compliance with mandated training. And with that, that is the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Jerome. Can I first ask, Jake, can you hear us now?
I hear you, yes.
And you can talk?
Yes.
So you're good. We've got you fixed then.
I'm good again, yes.
Does anyone have any questions for Jerome?
I do, and I think trustee Garcia does, too. Yes? No? Okay, I thought you were.
Let one go first.
Okay, so just real quick, thank you for the presentation, Jerome. As far as the challenges that we're facing with financial aid, I know Workday's been established at other institutions. Is this not something that we can, like, are other schools that have Workday, if they, if all of their needs were met, can we model like what other schools are doing, and this program be set up that way? And how long is it going to take before we find these alternative solutions to continue moving forward?
Yeah, so that's a very good question. In many cases, what we're finding, and I think this goes to, one of the reasons I love working at JJC, is that JJC is leading edge in a lot of things that JJC has done and implemented. So for some schools where they are okay with the way Workday has delivered the product, JJC is actually pushing Workday to go further and make the product more of a, delivering more to students and being quicker and faster with some of the solutions that are in place. So not getting into all of the details of that, but that is one of the things that we're seeing. Similar to with placement, other schools have placement, but again, with JJC and some of the placement things we put in place, we go a little further and deeper than other institutions at this point in time in the, in the community college space. As far as finding solutions, I think your second question was, we are, we've already have alternatives, we've gone through our steering committee and made sure that we're making decisions with the steering committees okay to move forward on some of these alternative solutions that we're putting in place. So again, what we're trying is, when we find those, we're trying to mitigate them, but what I was trying to point out here is that there are issues that we are running into and challenges that we continue to document those challenges and then come up with solutions that will meet the needs. And, you know, the primary focus of this is making sure our students have a great experience as they migrate from their current system that we're using into Workday.
Thank you.
Nancy?
No, just wanted to say thank you. No additional questions at this time.
Okay. I have one. In regards to where we are at, are we on timeframes of target, or we have, have we extended because of the issues and concerns that have crept in to the implementation of it?
No, as of right now, we have not extended the project. We are still on target for the final phase to go live for the fall of 2023. This was our, you know, as we've been going through the project, we're in a testing phase now until the end of December, so as of right now, we do not have any obstacles or any items that are preventing us from moving forward with our go-live plans.
Do you have anything that has come up that the employees have brought to your attention that you didn't think would occur, but has occurred?
Well, I think financial aid, you know, is one of those where we know that we were implementing financial aid, and some of the issues that have come up there, I think, have been probably some of the ones that have been the most challenging and working, you know, as we work through it. And I think that is one of our number-one areas that we continue to look at. We continue to, you know, understand from the day-to-day, what happens from a student perspective, what happens internally. And so those are some of the areas where we, I think we've run into some of the biggest roadblocks that we've been challenged with.
Okay, Jake, did you have any comments or concerns?
I did not. Thank you for the presentation, Jerome. I appreciate it, so.
Yes, thank you, Jerome. That will conclude that. I mean, we appreciate you being here, and thank you for all your.
All right, thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
All right. Next, we have a moment of silence. And the moment of silence is for several people. Michael Rio, who's the father-in-law of the nursing professor of Sue Rio; Willie Virginia Nelson, the mother of the Joliet Junior College Foundation Board Member Cornell Lurie; Kenneth James Gould, father of Joliet Junior College Foundation Board Member Brett Gould; James Popek, adjunct instructor and staff adjunct retiree of the technical department; Kathleen Cathy L. McGonigal, mother of the mathematics professor Donna Cottula. Does anyone else have anyone to add to the moment of silence? If not, please take a moment. Thank you. Do we have any recognition of special guests tonight? No, we're all special, but anybody have extra specials tonight? If not, I need a, we're going into the selected reports, the Board of Trustees' approval of the heritage, the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, and I think you have someone that will be reading that.
I do, we do. Vice Chair Broderick, thank you. Tonight, we have joining us Andrea Barone. She's seeking a major in communication with us, plans to receive her associate's degree in the spring of 2023. Andrea's involved in multiple clubs. She's currently the president of Latinos Unidos, a member of Disability Awareness Club, and is active in the theater club. In fact, during the spring semester, she held a feature role in the program's play Beckett Bites. Andrea's a first-generation college student. She was also a volunteer speech coach for Morris High School during the 21-22 academic year. In her free time, she enjoys reading and pen pal correspondence. She's planning on transferring to the University of Hawaii. Just kidding. Aurora, just kidding, just kidding, keeping you all on your toes. It was news to her as well, I saw her eyes there, to Aurora University to pursue a communication degree with a focus in graphic design. I'd invite her to read our proclamation.
Up to the podium.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
Whereas citizens of the Hispanic ancestry comprise a significant percentage of the residents of Illinois Community College District 525, and whereas it is the goal of Joliet Junior College to provide its students with a comprehensive curricular and co-curricular educational experience with consideration given to the contributions of all socially identifiable groups within American history and culture, and whereas the contributions of the citizens of the Hispanic ancestry to the history and culture of the United States are invaluable and abundant, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District 525, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in Illinois Community College District 525, adopted this 10th day of August 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion?
I'll move.
Second. Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
And Trustee Broderick?
Aye. Next, I need the recognition of retiree Deborah Dykstra.
Whereas Deborah Dykstra has been a loyal and dedicated employee of Joliet Junior College from August 2000 through August 2022, for 22 years of service with the college, retiring as professor in the Business Education Department, and whereas throughout her years of service, Deborah Dykstra has demonstrated admirable support for the ideals of education as well as for the institution of Joliet Junior College and the people whom the college serves, and whereas the service performed throughout her years at Joliet Junior College has always been of highest standard of professionalism, quality, and excellence, and whereas Deborah Dykstra is retiring with the proud distinction of Professor Amaretta, and now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District 525, Joliet Junior College, County of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby recognize and commend Deborah Dykstra for her distinguished service as well as for her diligence, perseverance, and loyalty in executing those duties as herein stated, adopted this 10th day of August 2022.
Motion?
I'll move.
Second. Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
And Trustee Broderick?
Aye. Next, the recognition of retiree Robert Scott Keller.
Did I go to the podium or stay here?
Choose whatever one you want to do.
Okay, I'm going to stay here.
No problem.
Okay, so whereas Robert Scott Keller has been a loyal and dedicated employee of Joliet Junior College from June of 1999 through August of 2022, for 23 years of service with the college, retiring as a professor in the Agriculture, Horticulture, and Veterinary Technology Department, and whereas throughout his years of service, Robert Scott Keller has demonstrated admirable support for the ideals of education as well as for the institution of Joliet Junior College and the people whom the college serves, and whereas the service performed throughout his years at Joliet Junior College has always been of the highest standard of professionalism, quality, and excellence, and whereas Robert Scott Keller is retiring with the proud distinction of Professor Amaretta, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby recognize and commend Robert Scott Keller for his distinguished service as well as for his diligence, perseverance, and loyalty in executing those duties and herein stated, adopted this 10th day of August 2022. Congratulations to Mr. Robert Scott Keller.
I need a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Kelly?
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
And Trustee Broderick?
Aye. Next, the recognition of retiree Amy Kittel. Well, did I ask you to read that one?
No, I can't, I'm on the page.
Can you read that one?
Sure.
Thank you.
Whereas Amy Kittel has been a loyal and dedicated employee of Joliet Junior College from July 1994 through August 2022, for 28 years of service with the college, retiring as a manager in the Dual Credit and P-20 Partnerships Department, and whereas throughout her years of service, Amy Kittel has demonstrated admirable support for the ideals of education as well as for the institution of Joliet Junior College and the people whom the college serves, and whereas the service performed throughout her years at Joliet Junior College has always been of the highest standard and professionalism, quality, and excellence, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby recognize and commend Amy Kittel for her distinguished service as well as for her diligence, perseverance, and loyalty in executing those duties as herein stated, adopted this 10th day of August 2022.
Need a motion?
So.
I'll move.
Second. [inaudible].
Kelly? Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
And Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Thank you all. Dr. Marsink, I need your faculty union report. And we have a substitute. How are you tonight?
I'm fine.
That's great.
All right. I am not Dr. Marsink, who had a have to, right? The, um, because he just doesn't care about this place. Yeah. Um, I'm Bill Hogan, I'm the longtime treasurer of the JJC Faculty Union. First of all, we'd like to welcome Dr. Namua. We had lunch with you, it was a pleasure to meet you. But now it's your first everything, first meeting, first opening session, first, yeah, everything. Right, but you're the 10th, is it 10th? I've only been here for seven of them, so I don't know. The, um, so congratulations, we're looking forward to your start. We'd like to add our voice to recognizing Deb Dykstra and Scott Keller, who, longtime faculty members, involved in many things, who I knew well. And, um, we're looking forward to the semester starting. It's, you know, we now live in a world where every fall is a new adventure of students who have yet another new mix of experience. You know, it used to be you knew what was coming, and now it's like, oh, this is the group that spent this part of their life out of school. And it affects each of them differently. So you have to look at it as a little variety instead of a hardship. Okay, we're looking forward to the semester.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Next, the adjunct faculty union report from Laurel Dykstra. Hello, Laurel. Welcome.
Thank you, and welcome back, everyone. Um, it's, it's great to see you again. I haven't seen you since May. And welcome, Dr. Namua. It's nice to see you and, and looking forward to working with you and, and hope we're all off to a great start. You know, I have to echo what, what Bill Hogan said. This is the time of year when educators are always optimistic and always looking forward to a new start. And you're right, I mean, he was right that, that it was, it used to be kind of predictable. It's somewhat less predictable right now. But we've all been through the same environment, and so we're, we're all working together to make it a good start. So, um, I'm kind of amazed that in my own experience, I continue to be optimistic. But I will keep doing this as long as, as that's true. And so I hope that everything goes well as we get off to a, a new semester. From the adjunct faculty perspective, we're somewhat concerned, as always, about enrollment. And, because this is the, the anxious time of year when classes get cut and people lose assignments and people get bumped. And so, you know, once we get through this next couple of weeks and everything kind of shakes out, hopefully there won't be too many of those, and so most of us will be able to start as expected. So with that, I'll say thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. Keep that positive attitude, both of you, that was great. Next, I need the approval of the minutes of our regular monthly meeting from June 15th, 2022. I need a motion for the approval.
Remove.
Second. Any discussion? If none, Kelly, please take the roll. Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
And Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Um, in regards to Carl, the review of the board retreat notes, we don't have to do an action item, do we?
No.
So you guys have all reviewed, so we don't have to have an action, it's just on the agenda as stated.
Correct.
Okay, next, do we have any communications that you'd like to share with us, Kelly? There are no communications, Madam Chair. So noted. We also now need the approval of the agenda. I need a motion? So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Kelly, please take the roll. Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
And Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
The approval of the consent agenda as presented. I need a motion?
Can I make a comment first?
We need the motion first, then you can do it in discussion.
Move.
Second. Discussion is now open.
I'm so sad about Dr. Whitehead, I love you and I will miss you. It's okay, I'm done.
I do want to remove 6.3.1 officers of the board/duties.
I'd like to pull, um, 4.2.1 bid for city center parking lot.
Anything else? That's it? Nancy, anything?
Uh, no, but can you repeat the one that you want to remove so I can add it in my notes?
The one 6.3.1 that I just pulled?
Okay.
The officers duties?
Got it, thank you.
Anyone else?
Nope.
If not, Kelly, roll. Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
And Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
I need a motion for 4.2.1, the bid on the city center Phase 2 parking lot expansion. I need motions.
Second.
Discussion?
So the reason I'm pulling this one is because this is more than half a million dollars that we are going to invest in, um, the parking lot over at the city center campus. My concern, and I think it's, um, I think I know why there was only one bid, but that's what's concerning me, that we say we put it out to over 1,200 vendors, 762 BEP, they were notified, and there was only one bid received. So that concerns me, but, um, I spoke with another trustee earlier, and it's probably because of, you know, post-COVID material backlog, everyone's behind. I would like for us to consider, I would like for this board to consider, I know that this is necessary, but can we consider putting it back up for another bid to hope to see if we can get more competitive bids for this? That's what my request is to make.
I guess the question just goes back to Dr. Namua as to where discomfortability is with what the timeframes are to pull that building down and, and, I mean, pull that part and do that parking lot area.
Uh, Vice Chair Broderick, trustees of the Board, and members of the JJC community, I, I think I'd like to invite Matt Stevenson up to the podium to address any procurement-related questions. And if any construction-related items come, come up, I'll have, uh, Pat Van Dine on deck.
Sure. Yes, to answer your question, we could go back out to bid. We did contact one of the other people that we thought might bid. Please keep in mind that when we say that, uh, that the number of people that receive the bids, only people that would be qualified to do this job would be expected to bid. So obviously, if you were a computer programmer, you wouldn't probably be bidding on a parking lot re- refurbished. What we, what we found out, um, was that the other company was not able to do the job because quite frankly, they were too busy. They already had enough work and they weren't able to do it in the timeframe that we wanted to do it. We could go out to bid, we could certainly do that, and we've rebid several, um, bids not related to constructions, rebidding because we haven't gotten the bids that we've wanted. Just some varying, you know, results. But, um, I'm not sure that we would do any better, but it's up to the board and Dr. Namua, of course, if we wanted to do something like that. It will put the, it will put the project behind.
Come on up, Pat.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Pat, I can't hear a word you're saying.
Yeah, Pat, why don't you come up to the podium here?
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I heard most of this in the BNG building, but...
So what I was saying was, I know that when it's a construction project, uh, if we want to rebid, we have to actually change the scope of the bid if there was, you know, if we, if we did it just because there was one single bidder. And so I don't know how we would actually change the scope of this project significantly enough to say we needed to rebid it because it was a scope problem. It, it really is not fair to the person or the company that did bid.
But what if the board would vote no on the bid accepted? Then what would be the alternative?
Let me, let me answer that question, yeah, let me answer that. So, you know, the, you've got a successful bidder, they complied, they're the lowest bidder. If nobody else bids, and I appreciate that that can be frustrating. I mean, you look at the 762 BEP were notified and nobody chose to bid on it for whatever reason. Deconstruction, who was the bidder in this particular one, if you rebid it on the same scope as Pat said, and somebody came in and bid lower than them, they would probably have a right to file a complaint and say, hey, I was the lower bidder, I, well, I followed the law, I didn't do anything wrong, and you just decided to reject my bid for no reason. We don't have any reason to do it other than we don't think we got enough bids, but we don't have anything or any information or evidence that says that the bid that they gave us was an unreasonable bid. I appreciate that it's expensive, but that doesn't mean it's unreasonable. So in the absence of some evidence that either we can't afford it or something along those lines, which at this point we don't have, it would be unreasonable, and Dee could probably, if we chose to go forward with the project on a rebid, seek to enforce their bid.
Otherwise, we'd have legal action that would possibly erupt if we do.
If we can't change the scope.
And the good news is that we anticipated this to be a lot larger project. We thought it was going to be closer to a million dollars instead of 500,000. Uh, and that being, the reason being is because we had heard rumor there were actually underground fuel tanks under, that had been paved over where the Chicken and Spice Building was. But when we did our ground analysis and everything, we found that wasn't true. So we were actually coming in better than we anticipated.
I appreciate the insight, thank you.
Good. Any more questions or discussions?
My only thought would be right now, price of everything. If we were to wait, it could actually raise the price on things. So I think that...
We should move forward. Mm-hmm.
That concludes the discussion, Kelly, please take roll. Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
And Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
I need a motion for 6.3.1 officers of the board duty on 01.10.01. So moved. Second. Discussion that I'm concerned about, and Michelle, I'll share this with you. I noticed that this was in the consent that was in, and the reason I'm pulling it is because there's no timeframes. And I talked to, um, Tracy, the compliance officer, and she said, if we add that, that can be simply added to it, we can accept it, but with timeframes added to it, it doesn't have to come back to us again. Um, I said timeframes within less than 24 hours because if there's no communication, and it's just in here that the chairperson has to communicate to the vice or to the president, it leaves it open. I think we need to close it so that we have good communication.
I'd like to table this and bring it back. I don't want to make any on-the-fly decisions on a policy. I think that that can get us in, so I'd like to take time to look at it then. And put, and discuss those time limits. We can knock it back to the Policy Committee, and, uh, Trustee Morales and I will take a look at it.
Then I need to have the motions pulled back and a motion to table it instead.
Yeah, just amend the motion to table.
All right, amend the motion to table. The 6.3.1.
So moved.
Second.
Kelly? Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have old and new business. We have the approval of a timekeeper. I need a motion for that. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I guess...
What's that? No, it's actually marked as a, as a vote item, but I, you know, I looked in the board packet, who are you, who are you naming as the timekeeper?
Yourself.
Oh, that's fine. It just didn't say it in there, so I wanted to make sure the record is clear.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be Carl Buck.
Well, there was a motion and a second, but...
The attorney, because we don't think Kelly should be doing it since she's doing minutes and roll calls, and none of us are capable of doing that because you're gonna be timekeeping all of us. So the only person that's eligible is yourself.
Time.
We'll have a big scoreboard. Like the shot clock in the basketball game.
So do we have any, now that we know we have a first and a second, and it's, we know it's Carl?
I like that, he's really good at it.
Yeah, he's great.
He's been practicing. I'm gonna get A.D. Braun to give me the buzzer from basketball.
If we have no discussion hearing none, please, Kelly, take a roll. Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
And Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
All right, first reading of the board policies. Michelle, I'll let you do your...
So we have, uh, Agenda Item 6.2.1, which is Policy 02.03.06, Grant-Funded Employment, which establishes parameters surrounding hiring employees funded in whole or by parts by specific grants for a defined period of time. House, Agenda Item 6.2.2, Policy 08.01.04, Grants Indirect Costs. States whether, whenever allowable, JJC will request funding for indirect costs acquired during any grant application process. 6.2.3, Policy 08.02.03, Federal and State Funds encourages college staff to actively seek federal and state funds to be used to supplement income received from tuition and fees as well as private sources. It ensures compliance with the Higher Learning Education Opportunity Act pertaining to lobbying. Language was changed to add clarity to the matching leveraged funds and the grant management sections of the policy. Thank you to everyone who does such great work on these things. 6.2.4, um, Policy 08.02.03, Funds from Private Sources encourages college staff to actively seek funds from private sources to be used to supplement income received from the tuition and fees as well as district, state, and federal sources, and establishes the parameters surrounding accepting donations. 6.2.5, Policy 11.03.00, Armed Officers, permits authorized campless police to carry department-approved firearms. And yes, that is it for first reading of board policies and a quick overview of them. If you would like to please read them, any questions, um, let us know before next month because they will be getting approved.
Does anyone have anything from Michelle, just off the call right now? If not, we will move on. Nexus Reports, the JJC Foundation. We have the Executive Director, Kristi Malvi.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, we started out this fiscal year with a very generous gift. Um, Amanda and I drove to Aurora yesterday to pick up, um, a FitzTrust endowment check for $522,000. This endowment will provide $20,000 worth of scholarships to our students, $10,000 to our fine arts student, and $10,000 to our nursing students. So it was a very generous gift and a great way to start out this fiscal year of fundraising. As some of you might know, Monday, August 15th is our drop date, and I'm happy to say that all the scholarships that the foundation, um, processes, all that money is put on the students' accounts. So hopefully, none of their classes will get dropped, and they've got the money that, um, they've applied for. Um, Dr. Namua attended his first foundation board meeting on July 20th, and everybody on the board is very happy, um, to, to meet him. I want to share a couple 2022 numbers with you as we just finished out the year end. Our employees at the college gave $165,633 to this institution. And I'm so proud of working with people that give that much money back, um, to the place that they work. So we're really proud of that number. work. So we're really proud of that number. And our corporate giving total was 269,459. So the total gifts that we brought into the college last fiscal year, we brought in 7,923 donations. So let's, hopefully, we can pass that up for next year, but we've got a good start to it. I continue to receive requests from our students starting in a couple weeks from our Student Emergency Fund, and my staff and I are continuing to solicit donations for that. It's a very good resource for our students. I just want to say a big thanks to Dr. Numuo for being so eager to meet so many of our valued donors and our corporate partners. He's only been here 40 days, and he's met more than 40 people. So it's a pleasure to work with him, and I look forward to the future. And that's the end of my report.
Does anyone have any questions for Kristi?
I have one thing, and I'm going to ask this of you. And I, it's, you and Dr. Numuo can figure it out. I had a presentation that I was going to do about grants, but I don't really think that falls under me. We had it done by the ICCTA, by the financial director. Is there any way in a future meeting that we could, and I'll give you this as a copy of what they provided to us through Dr. Numuo, that we could have a grant presentation so we know exactly more about the grants and how they're derived and who the grant writers are and that?
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's a thriving enterprise for us, Trustee Broderick. So absolutely.
And then I just want to say thank you. The foundation does a phenomenal job. You guys have done, I mean, enormous. And in my discussion with Dr. Numuo on Friday, I said, I know from all of the ICCTA people that we are the best and the biggest foundation driver. You are definitely leading the pack. And he complimented by saying, I think it's all over the whole, all states. So I think we need to give credit where credit's due. You do a great job. And your foundation people.
I have 10 people.
You have a good, no, you have a good staff. I'm just saying, make sure they realize that we are sharing that as the trustees.
I will share that with them. Thank you very much for your.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristi. Okay. I get to talk now. The ICCTA report. All right. As of July 1st, I was put, I guess, sworn in as the vice president of the ICCTA. And I'm so excited because I am responsible for the roundtable. And the ICCTA quarterly meeting, and I want you all to put that on your calendar. And Kelly, did you bring the calendar page of the one I asked you to print out for the?
Meeting.
Yeah, for the meeting that showed all that. Did you give it to me?
Oh, this.
Oh, this, okay. Did you make enough copies for everybody? Okay. If you could do this, this is the whole meeting agenda for the September 8th through September 10th meeting. And the roundtable is on the September 9th. It's from 9:30 to 11:30. It's in Springfield. So if you can attend, it's always welcome. And I'm going to ask for any items that you'd like to have discussed, because I'm the one that gets to choose topics, and we always like to go to our members to ask what they would like to have discussed with all the community colleges. So I'm looking for suggestions on that to be provided to Kelly by the end of the month. And you all know Kelly's email, and I think we're all connected with email, I'm hoping now. And on August 19th and 20th, I meet with the executive ICCTA meeting in DuPage, because the president of the ICCTA is the president of the, or the chair of the DuPage, the college at DuPage. And she's also Maureen. So it's Maureen, Maureen. So we're having a lot of Maurens. And then the president's council, that will be meeting on September 10th. Will you be attending then, too? You get to meet all of them. Good. And everything is at the Crown Plaza in Springfield. Now, as far as the ACCT, I hope everybody's got marked on their calendars, the New York Convention, which is October 26th to October 29th in New York City. And we have one of our trustees, as I mentioned at the last meeting, which was Michelle Lee, who attended Leadership Governance Meeting, 6:15 to 6:18 in Honolulu. And we'd love for you to share your experience and what you learned from that conference, if you would, wouldn't mind.
All right. So I'm going to go over just some of the things that were the main topics that we went over, and a few things that we, that I took out of it. So what are the roles and responsibilities of the board? And some of the main things that Tim Hardy talked about were the strategic plan, ongoing dialogue with the president, and finance. He went into detail on each of those things. But, you know, as we are a policy creating, predominantly a policy creating board, working hand in hand with the president and making sure we're all on the same page with the strategic plan, and finance is clearly one of our, some of our other things that we focus on as our responsibilities. Vivian, and I'm going to probably butcher this because it's in Hawaiian, and I do not know how to say this. Do you want to come pronounce her name for me?
Probably not.
Malauulu. I think that's how you say it, because the u's are o's. So I'm just going to go with that. Talked about roles and respons, roles and responsibilities of, as well, and continued on that. And she said, you know, being present and listening and doing the right thing, which, you know, doing the right thing, I think if we go by our model of standards that we read earlier today at the beginning of the board and kind of go off of that. And she talked about lessons that she learned. And this was so interesting to me, learning how to count. You know, we all have votes in here. And so before you get into a huge battle or a huge fight, simply calling and seeing you, you have support on things can go a long way. So I thought that was interesting, that people actually think about those type of things. And that it was, it was a topic that was brought up. It made things feel kind of very transparent, that, you know, we all need to learn how to count. And that was interesting to me. Know your audience, and learning to work with your CEO. So were some of the other lessons that she learned, along with our roles and responsibilities, which I definitely think knowing your audience, knowing your community is definitely very important. We were given the option to go on two, during the college, to go on two different tours of the college. One was to go to a planetarium and kind of give the history of Hawaii. And the other was to go outside and see their medical garden, which I literally have, don't, my videos won't upload. I need help from, like, somebody there. Or I was going to have the video from there, but it's too long and it won't upload. It was so beautiful. It was so educational. We got to try real sugarcane. And it was just amazing seeing their, what they grow, and their medical garden, and learning all about it. Wasn't that long of a video. It was only like five minutes, but it was really, really beautiful. I'm sorry, I don't have that for you. The next thing that we talked about was, and I think everything, the main theme of this was building a relationship with your president, and mutual respect, transparency, establishing goals, assuming the best intentions of the president. We all do not always agree with everything, but I thought that was another key thing, too. And assume the best intentions with your trustees as well, was another thing that we talked about. And just dialogue between, and the importance of that. To be intentional on building relationships through board retreats hosted by outside individuals, which we do quite often. The president evaluation, and I am going to say this again, and I've said this before, and apparently, nobody likes my ideas, but I think we need board evaluations. And I think they should, obviously anonymous, but I think if we were to ask the president, the president's cabinet, faculty, and even students, if they wanted to be open to this, and it be anonymous, on how well does your board work together? How do you feel the board supports the president? How do you feel the board supports the faculty? How do you feel the board supports the students? It doesn't have to be this real in-depth, but I think that that would give us some feedback as a board on how we are doing and how we are portraying ourselves. So I'm going to go ahead and throw that out there, that I am all for board evaluations. And the three biggest things I took away from this, I were, I met a man, was myself and a few other trustees on the beach, and had no idea who he was. He had no idea who we, who I was, or who we were, and that we were from a community college. And we told him, and he goes into this story about how community college saved his life. And he was just so amazed that we were in Hawaii. And one, and he like told us this amazing story about how he ended up going to France, and how they have this amazing community college program there. And he said, act local, think global. That really stuck with me. I think that because Hawaii has everything imported in, they have more of a global mindset than the rest of us mainlanders. I'm going to call us that now, but I've, anyway, the next thing that I, so I really loved that conversation with him. He was amazing, and I, that will stick with me for forever. Act local, think global. And the case studies, we got to split off into groups, and we did, were given case studies. I think Maureen, tell them, spend more time on that. They did not, they, we didn't even get through it, because they basically didn't set aside enough time for that. I think that was the most important part, where you were given a case study, your table talked about it, you learned from the other people, from everyone's experiences, and what they either had gone through, or questions that they were asking, or other people in the room were asking. So I think that that should be more time spent on that. And networking, and learning from the other trustees from other colleges that are from other states, that are not, that are ran differently than ours, that some things that are good and some things that are not. I learned that other colleges have student trustees for two years or more than one year. I think that that would be something that I don't, I don't, why kick them out if they do such a good job after one year? That was something that I would like to have an open conversation about. So I learned a lot. It was amazing. And thank you. I think I've gone on for longer than five minutes now.
Thank you for your report. Excellent. Thank you. Now, I want to read something that is on the ICCTA. We made a statement, and it's an anti-racism statement, that was unanimously approved by all of the ICCTA delegates. And I think this is something that we're very proud of, because we're watching everything through the DEI lens, as Dr. Numuo has said. And it says this on the board, on the, their website. "The Board of Representatives, Administration, and Staff of the LMI Community College Trustees Association recognize that racism is pervasive in our society, and that no segment of our, of our nation is exempt, including our member colleges. We acknowledge that students, alumni, and employees of our member colleges, especially those who are persons of color, have experienced and have been hurt by marginalization, silencing, tokenism, erasure, and other damaging practices. We can unconditionally reject racism in all forms and embrace the institutional change necessary to dismantle systems that perpetuate injustice and inequity. We will listen and learn from each other and work to hear and amplify the voices of those who have been marginalized, and we will use every opportunity to create lasting changes in alignment with these objectives." And that was, the whole process of centering the voices of those persons of color is ongoing, and we intend to be a new and permanent part of our lives together. This was adopted unanimously by the LMI Community College Trustees Association. And I think all of us should be proud of it, because we're all very concerned about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that was the statement that came out of our Diversity and Equity Group. And with that, that concludes my ICCTA and ACCT report. And now I'm going to go to our student trustee. Thanks, Josh.
Good evening. This is the student trustee report for Wednesday, August the 10th. Where's the, here it is. Found it. All right. I'll briefly begin by reviewing what on-campus activities occurred since the last board meeting. First, there was a field day and picnic put on by OSA, which occurred July the 12th at the main campus, with games of bags and prizes to boot. There was also a breakfast grabbing go, where on specific dates during June, July, and August, students attending summer classes were able to grab a provided breakfast and snack food. Finally, free HIV testing was provided throughout the summer. Other summer opportunities include the goose chase, more information will be on a later slide, and the paint and picnic event occurring June the 15th. As for the Fourth of July celebration, the turnout was fantastic. I myself was there with my family, and I was, it was an incredible display.
Mm-hmm.
As you all know, the fall semester is about to commence, and JJC is putting on a welcome week for all new and returning students. Welcome week runs from the 22nd of August to the 26th. Welcome week introduces students to campus resources to fulfill academic, social, and other needs. All week, a goose chase scavenger hunt will be running. The goal of this scavenger hunt is to get students to walk around and kind of build their internal map of the school, and to familiarize themselves with important and landmark locations on campus. There will be a block party on Tuesday, August the 23rd. It will have food trucks, music, informational tables for students, and it will run from 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. There will also be the picnic in the Grove. There will be live events. There will be karaoke. And that will be running on August the 24th. It will run from 10:00 o'clock to 1:00 o'clock. There is also pictures with Wiley. Dr. Numuo has seen, I've seen the pictures. I think you've met him. Thursday, August the 24th, we'll see Wellness Day. It will run from 10:00 to 2:00, and have wellness stations, therapy dogs, virtual reality headsets, string art, and food. Wellness Day is to focus students on their physical and mental wellbeing. Friday, wrapping up Welcome Week, will have its Movie Under the Stars event, featuring the film Doctor Strange and the Multiverse of Madness. The film will be shown in front of the bell tower at dusk. Don't forget to bring chairs, blankets, and snacks. Other important meeting dates I thought I ought to mention include the Colgate Club's Council's first meeting on September the 7th at 2:30 in the U Auditorium, and Student Government's first meeting, August the 24th, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. in A102. Soon after students get settled into their classes, there will be opportunities for students to enhance their leadership skills through club involvement, club training, student leadership training, and NSLS. I was also informed of a meeting greet between NSLS, Phi Theta Kappa, and the Honors Program taking place Monday, August the 15th, in the Picnic Grove from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. There will be games, a scavenger hunt, and food. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Josh, or comments?
Questions, comments, concerns, criticisms, critiques. Congratulations.
Yes.
Very good, Josh. Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Excellent report. Buildings and grounds. Mr. Jake? Can't hear him. Are you muted?
I am muted. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I want to say the big news of today is the Campus Police Station dedication. I'm glad we were able to get that open finally. Sorry, wasn't able to make it today. We are down to one car in this family, so I am picking up and dropping off Serena and the kids at daycare all week here. So we're hoping to get a rental car next week. But Maureen, did you make the dedication day? Was it a good dedication?
Myself, Michelle, and Josh were all present there.
Very nice. I'm glad to hear that. It's been a long time coming, so I'm glad we were able to get that project done. Today, we obviously approved the city center parking lot phase two demo. And then we also did the storefront window replacement phase two. So we're doing the various storefronts, because they are beginning to leak a little bit. Projects in construction right now, the update on the J-Building elevators, it looks like one elevator is complete, J1, but the other two are going to be postponed and delayed a little bit. So they're not going to be done before the start of the school year. It looks like they're, they are projected to get finished in somewhere in mid to September. Also, the miscellaneous capital improvements projects, which is a whole bunch of HVAC projects lumped into one. It looks like they're starting to order the materials and getting ready to start the, start the projects there. In design right now is the air handling unit replacements project, which I think we all talked about before. It's about a $6 million project, but the CDB committee is going to cover about $4.5 million to lighten the load on us, obviously. And that completes my report, because the Workday report was completed earlier. So.
Any questions for Jake, or comments? Anyone? If not, thank you, Jake, for your report. Next is the board policy. Michelle or Alicia?
I do the first reading, so that I really, unless there's any questions or anything that I have, or something that I want to get your consensus on. And I don't have anything at this point in time. So.
Great. Thank you. Next, Finance Committee. Mr. Jim or Mr. Jake? Mr. Jim, I would think you're doing it.
We have not met since the last meeting we had. We enjoyed July off as well. However, I mentioned at the last board meeting that we were all going to get a survey. That did get sent to us by SecHitch in this past week. We encourage everyone to get them filled out honestly and sent back. I know honesty is, but they're looking for some feedback. So by honesty, I mean, don't just check a So by honesty, I mean, don't just check a box and leave the comments blank. Give them some feedback to work with so that it's got some value to them versus, you know, just a form with a couple checkboxes filled, so. Thank you.
Did everyone get theirs in the mail? Nancy, Alicia?
Email?
No, it would have come through regular mail. Mine came here, as Jeff notes.
I haven't received mine.
I haven't received mine that I'm aware of.
Okay, so we've got one, two. I've got mine that came here that was supposed to go to my house. Jake, did you get yours?
No, I have not seen it, so I don't know if I've got it. But let me go, let me go through the mail on the countertop over there.
Mine was delivered on the same day as the board packet. The two packets were together on the porch.
It should have been, it should have been last week.
I got mine the same day.
Oh, I did get it, yes, I did, thank you. Now, I
Alicia has it.
I only got one packet. I know for sure I only had one packet in my mailbox.
Okay, so.
It doesn't look like it's a JJC packet, it looks like something else.
Well, it's from Sickich, that's why.
Yeah. Yeah, we got it.
Nancy, you got it?
Yeah, I didn't.
Okay. So the only ones are Michelle and Jake that are without.
Let me, let me check my countertop with the stack, with some mail. So was it delivered with the board packet or was it delivered separately?
It was delivered separately, but I got them at the same time.
Okay. Let me, let me just check that.
Alright, if that be the case, if you have it or don't have it, please get back to Kelly so that Kelly knows whether she should tell Jeff to have another one sent. We know Michelle doesn't, so Jake, you're the only one that we're going to be waiting on for Kelly to know whether you got it or not. Alrighty. So that concludes yours then, Jim? Thank you. President's report. Dr. Namuwa, you're up to bat.
Vice Chair Broderick, trustees of the board, and members of the JJC community who are with us in person today and connecting virtual. I'm having trouble containing my excitement, as you can see. It's just an incredible honor to be with you all sitting in this chair. I wanted to take a moment, though, to acknowledge, I'm sure many of you have noticed some picture changes in this room. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the ninth president, my predecessor, Dr. Judy Mitchell. She's been an incredible support. She's provided a lot of support to me and the appropriate amount of space as well for me to be successful. So I want to take some time to acknowledge Judy and all of her efforts. I've got a lot of people to thank, and I'm not sure where to start, but I will. I just think back, though, and I think all of you are going to get some sense of what I plan to share at general session next week. And I think about, I think about my parents in this work. Part of the reason why I smile and work so hard and do what I do is I represent generations behind me who struggled. I think about my mom, who was a maid, who canned pineapples, as some of you have heard that story in Hawaii. I think about my dad when he was working his way through both high school and college as a janitor. If either of them thought, you know, 50-plus years ago that their son would be a college president, I think that was the furthest thing from their minds. They were just working really hard to give my brother and I a better life. And they did. And so everything I do, the reason why I smile so big and try so hard and have endless amounts of energy for this work is to honor them. I want to extend just a huge thank you to the entire JJC community. You all have been so incredibly welcoming, from our frontline staff to the cabinet, to our leaders, and to the trustees. And I hope to honor all of your confidence in this role and work really hard to do really big things. On that note, I want to commend the trustees for recommitting themselves to the model standards. That was an excellent way to start this meeting, and just want to commend the board on that. I too will miss Dr. Whitehead, trustee Lee. I feel you there. And I do have some, some things to highlight. There are many things to highlight here at the college, but I'll choose to highlight some things in five areas. And I'll start with academic affairs, some great things. And the first is out of our culinary program, of course, one of our, one of our thriving and signature programs. And so allow me to share some details, and for the trustees, I've provided additional information. And you've got this as a printout, and I'm submitting this entire report for the record. Our culinary arts student Liam O'Brien won the silver medal nationally, was part of a gold medal-winning team here in the state of Illinois, and along with the encouragement, support of chef Michael Shannon, went on to play second nationally. So it's an incredible honor. And in regards to chef Shannon, chef was named the 2021 Chef of the Year as the top chef in the nation, just 10 years after graduating from JJC's Culinary Arts Academy. So JJC Culinary remains a thriving program here at JJC, one that we all should be very proud of. And if you haven't gone down there, which I imagine many of you have, you'll see me down there quite a bit. There'll be an exhibit in the Laura Sprague Art Gallery from August 29th to October 10th, titled "A Year of Mondays" by Christopher T. Wood. There'll be some auditions held for our upcoming theater productions as we emerge from this pandemic and transition into more endemic times. "The Odd Couple," directed by Professor Tammy Perkins. The auditions are August 31st through September 1st, and the show dates are October 6th and 8th. I encourage any interested to attend that production. The next one is "The Wolves," directed by Assistant Professor Brian Fruits. And those show dates are November 3rd and November 6th. In the DEI and compliance front, something I'm really excited about, and I know Dr. Irvin's here today. We are kicking off our affinity resource groups, or rather employee affinity groups, and I use the term from my previous employer there. In an attempt to continue to create inclusive spaces, inclusive safe spaces, and apply a diversity lens to our work, create equitable outcomes for both our students and our employees. I'm extremely proud of the work that we're doing in the DEI space. So I encourage everyone to read and listen to those announcements if they're interested in becoming more connected to our employee affinity groups. In the compliance front, or on the compliance front, rather, we are performing a civil rights internal assessment in progress that's nearing completion, and we'll present that report once it's done. In human resources, we remain active in our recruitment and our retention of the talent that we aspire to have and the talent that we have here. People are at the heart of what we do. In my initial communication to the college community, one of the highlights for me was a statement that is at the core of my leadership philosophy, and that is, we are people before we're employees. We're mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, aunts, uncles. All before, we're deans, presidents, vice presidents, and frontline staff. And it's important for JJC to acknowledge that, resource that, and recognize all the good work that's done here at JJC. We did have a farewell reception for Dr. Whitehead. Want to commend her for her time here, all the good work and leadership that she provided, and wish her the absolute best in her new role. We had an employee, student-employee picnic that was held on July 12th. And in an attempt to check off my Midwest bingo card, I now know that it's called Bags, and it's not called Cornhole. It's called Bags. Okay, alright. Next up in the institutional advancement front, really happy that Christie presented what she did. And we will have a future board presentation in regards to grants and all the things we're doing there. Many of the things that I was going to highlight, Christie has already highlighted, $522,000 gift from the Fitz Estate to support both nursing and fine art students, as Christie mentioned. Foundation support for students through the Emergency Fund in FY22, a total of $104,000 to support students' basic needs. As you all know, our students struggled through the pandemic, and recovering from that pandemic is going to take our students a little bit longer. So I'm really proud of the work that JJC has done to support students both inside and outside of the classroom. And on the student development front, trustee Stamboreski shared, and I encourage the college community to join us to celebrate the start of another semester. We've got a whole welcome week worth of activities, and you are all more than welcome to join us. But thank you all. Thank you, trustee Broderick, for the opportunity to share a report.
Great, thank you so much. And I see that our verbatim things were already included in the agenda, so we don't have to go there. Chairs report. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Namuwa on his first meeting with us today and his engaging in doing a great transition and getting to know the employees, the students, and having an open door policy and being accessible and learning about the JJC culture and adapting to it and becoming a Midwesterner. Had to do that. And I'd also like to thank Brandon, our police chief, for having such a great ribbon cutting and opening of our new police station. It was really phenomenal, everyone that attended. It was great attendance. Thanks, Kelly, for everybody that you had there. We had different police officers from different communities that were there, elected officials that were there. Jake, it was really great. We're sorry we missed you, but it was really great.
I'm glad it was. It was a long time in the making, so.
Yeah, I mean, it was. And a lot of them, the thing that they all liked, that they wanted to see was the covering area that we had for our police cars due to the weather. And that was kind of a key issue that to be out of the elements in the winter months, which Dr. Namuwa will find out what that's all about. But the snow and that, that's what they were really watching and looking at and how we did it. And they thought it was really greatly put together, so good job on the building. Then I just want to say thank you for all of you reading the new additions on the model, for the model standards that was added to our agenda. I think it's critical that we came out of a great retreat. And coming out of that retreat was very expressive. Everyone was expressive of their feelings and honest. And I think the model, the models that we follow have to be adhered to and show that we show a trust and a confidence in each of us as trustees. And in saying that, Jim Reed, the ICCTA Executive Director, recommended that we have a follow-up retreat because the one in July was really good, but it brought up a lot of, you know, things that we need to work on individually and as a group. And the retreat dates that he's looking at are anywhere from 11:14 to 11:18. I'm going to ask that Kelly put that in an email and find out what day works. But Jim is open to any Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. And it would probably be just a three-hour retreat that we could set up. And the other thing that was recommended out of the retreat was personality testing. Strength finders was one of them that Dr. Namuwa recommended. It would get us to know who we are and who we're working with. Because we see each other once a month, and we need to know the person that we're engaging with. And I don't want to fight with you, and I don't want to be sappy with another. I want to know what your strengths and your weaknesses are so that we can pull together and work together. And I think, I got to say, this meeting was wonderful. I think you all were great. And I think we need that togetherness to working. We have a new president. We need to show strength in the unification of the board. Yes, we're going to have difference of opinions, but I think we also need to get to know each person because we are a new board with a new president. And we have to show the trust and confidence, as I stated, for each trustee. The other thing I was going to mention, too, going forward, we need to make sure that we contact the chair, whoever the chair is at that time, whether it's Dan or whatever, prior to, for any items that might be pulled so that we know, so the chair knows what to expect, so there's nothing unexpected. So if anyone has anything, and I'm glad that Dr. Namuwa is calling each of us on Friday, and that's a pattern that he's going to keep going, if I'm, if I'm correct in stating that. I think it was very good for him to get to know our concerns and then to put the concerns collectively together so everyone knew what was out there. And it decreased and minimized more questions because we got the questions answered ahead of time. And then the next thing, I think we need a calendar of events that the trustees can attend or that may want to attend. We talked about trustee attendance and making sure the trustees are more visible because everybody wants to see us and collaborate on things that we can attend. So if we can get a calendar of events, of trustee events to attend, and then for Kelly to make us aware and put it on the calendar so we know and Dr. Namuwa knows what we'll be going to. And so will the employees know that we'll be there. And then something that I want to, I want you all to think about because we have all been talking about who we are, but does the public really know who we are? And I'd like to do a member spotlight, a trustee member spotlight, once a month. So we take, I'll say Alicia, you would go September. Nancy would go October. Tell us three to four minutes about yourself so the public knows who you are. We don't know who each other, who each others are, other than what we know of ourselves. But what does the public know? So I'm making that, does anyone have any problems with having a member, a trustee spotlight?
I think it's a great idea. I think it's long overdue, too.
Okay. Everyone, Kelly will send out one per meeting. So whoever wants September, October, November, I don't care what I get, I'll be the last one to choose, I don't care. But give it to whomever responds and wants. And I think, are they all connected now with email connections? Are we getting there for email connections on their phones or?
We'll have devices in advance of the September meeting.
Oh, good, okay, so we are heading towards that. Okay, good. And then we had talked about town hall quarterly meetings and going to board, high school board meetings, village meetings, business meetings. I think we need to have that collaboration again so that we know what we can attend and what we should be attending. Because I know that when I attended a high school meeting for Lockport, they were surprised and excited to see JJC there. And I think it's more of an effect of increasing enrollment and increasing the awareness that JJC is concerned with what the high school is doing. And I know you're going to talk to the superintendents. So I'm going to ask that we look at the trustee attendance to events for those, for the high school board meetings, for village meetings, business meetings, and then start looking at town hall quarterly meetings. And we have seven counties. We should be accessible to getting out to those town hall meetings. And I say quarterly, we have seven, seven counties that we're in. So it would be nice to have some access and some availability of people knowing what we're all about. I think it's also an ability to increase enrollment, too. Awareness is all that. And with that, I'd like to ask this. I saw all the new pictures up, and I'm glad to see that the current ones are up. Is there any way, we did make, and I know JD is a current emeritus. Dr. Mitchell will be as of September 1st. Is there any way we can put a little trigger below that that says emeritus? Because I think that's a recognition that should be known since they did get awarded it. And I think that should be on their little medal, their piece of medal down there. If anybody has a problem with that or not, I think that would be a nice thing to. I think JD and Judy did a great job. Dr. Mitchell did a wonderful job with us. You know, it's sad to see that she's gone, but we have Dr. Namuwa. So we look forward to making everything better. And with that, that's the end of my report. We have no closed session because we had our closed session, our executive session, at the onset of the meeting. So with that, I need to have a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That concludes our meeting.